Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor Ludwig?
Here.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Here.
Council President Escobar?
Here. Mr. Vice President, the municipal ordinance of the public hearing act has been complied with and satisfied. The annual notes which pay sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public hearings in the municipal council of the city of the Bronx has been filed with the city clerk. Has been placed on an appropriate bulletin board in City Hall and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of the Bronx, mainly the home news report.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This afternoon, I would just wanted to remind us that it's also, October is also breast cancer over this month, and in this country, last year, more than 360 people were diagnosed with breast cancer. But there's hope, there's early detection, so let's encourage our friends, families to get it done, the test done, and we have, we are glad to see in the city that we have plenty of resources that offer free mammal grants for the community. So let's keep in mind, early detection is the answer. Thank you.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Madam Clerk, has the public has been directed to the appropriate departments?
Yes, the Council President, the correspondent, the chief branch, the city clerk, charges was forwarded to the appropriate department for their action.
Thank you. So we have the public hearings, we're going into the ordinance of second meeting, we have the first one, ordinance 102402, and one has two, a supplemental advice general ordinance of the city of New York by the 10th, because I'm traffic, we have the 10th control, traffic control regulation, city, and on the 24th, schedule 23, school zones. We are adding 15 miles per hour zone on Livingston School and Rochester Red Shaw School. Before we go into the public comment on these ordinance, any of my fellow council members have any questions or any comments on these ordinance? At this time, we are preparing to open the public hearing on these ordinance only, you have up to five minutes per person, one time up. Any member of the public wishes to address the council on this specific ordinance, please come to the mic.
Uh, yes, Daniel Moore, due to where, uh, I did speak, uh, if this is the same one at, at the traffic meeting, due to where, is this for basically Lee Avenue?
Mr. Valenti?
Yes, Madam House President, this is a section of Lee Avenue between Comstock and Delavan, which will serve as both the backside of Red Shaw School as well as Livingston School that's relocated on Delavan Street.
Thank you.
Now, one question I didn't ask at the traffic meeting, I'm not, I'm not so sure, is, is this, does this have a speed bump there already?
Mr. Valenti, do you know it?
I don't recall if there's actually a speed bump there, there are several speed bumps along Lee Avenue, I, I don't recall if there's one there, but it's owing a block from Sanford Street, which is controlled by a traffic signal. So from that direction, we don't expect traffic to gain too much speed, and I believe there may be one further down closer to Handy, but I, I'm not certain at this point.
Thank you.
Okay, one thing, due to where, like I said, I thank you for adding this, this sign for safety, whenever safety issues, I thank you for seeing, seeing things like this, but once again, once you put things in order, please, like I said, due to where, I was also talking about the school on Jersey Avenue needs one of these, but even if it is a bright light, one thing I proved several times, wow, when a person here, here at a red light, and usually it will turn green, what do you do? You press your foot on the accelerator, due to where, what, how people take, take off, due to where they don't respect 15 miles per hour, I would like to see New Brunswick Police Department, like I said, taking, getting out tickets, due to where you always say, oh, this is what this is for, to slow people down, but how many people do you have disrespecting the law? Because wow, New Brunswick Police Department doesn't give out enough tickets. So like I said, I'm, I'm glad to see this, like I said, I did discuss it, but I will speak on this plea, please, like I said, just because the sign is there, due to where, what, are, are people really gonna go 15 miles per hour, I think it's time to start putting people in check who are breaking the law. Thank you.
Anybody else from the member of the public that we saw, do you guys would like to talk to the council? See none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmembers Socor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. We have ordinance 102403, it's an ordinance to amend a supplemental advice general ordinance of the city of the Bronx, Title 16, land control, Chapter 16, 124, side project review, Section 162427A, stormwater control ordinance, and this is in reference to updates that we've made. Mr. Jar, if you would just please give us a overview of these particular ordinance.
Um, this is an update to our stormwater ordinance, including some additional language recommended by the EPA and New Jersey Futures to improve our ability to manage stormwater now and in the future.
Thank you. Any other, my council members, any comments, any questions about these particular ordinance? See none? We are preparing to open the floor for the public, any comments on these ordinance only, anyone who's prepared to address the council on these particular ordinance, please come forward, you have five minutes, one time up.
Good evening, Council, Charlie Cradwell, Lou Frontzwick, Lou Frontzwick today, I wanted to ask if this will have any impact on the rate structure and the rates that we're set, decided on?
Mr. Jar?
This has nothing, this is no relationship with that whatsoever.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public?
Hi, yes, Daniel Moore, I, I'm gonna make it clearer, when Mr. Cradwell just said rates, due to where no one on there will see an increase on their water bill, I, I wanna make it clear.
I would just say that this particular ordinance doesn't have to do anything with the rate, you're not saying that there's no rate?
Well, then, okay, would you please tell me, due to where, like I said, I, I was told that I misunderstood it last time, due to where, I had questioned, due to where about seeing payments of anyone who pays almost $20, who pays a water bill, so okay, with this ordinance, will we see an increase on our water bill with the payment of where it said at the bottom, stormwater?
No, this has no rate, has, has nothing to do with your water bill.
All right, thank you.
Again, to make it clear, the ordinance, this particular, what is inside, what is included in that, it has nothing to do with the rate, that doesn't mean that maybe who might see it or he might not, but this particular ordinance has nothing to do with rate, it's something else. Anybody else from the public? See none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. We have ordinance 102404, one ordinance provided for various improvements to the water system by the city of New York. Mr. Drew, if you could just just say, please, may I just say, we have been talking about this, of this particular ordinance, please.
Council President, absolutely, and as council, this is a companion ordinance, what we discussed during the budget process, and I use that the city, with a couple of projects related to city infrastructure improvements, facility restorations, equipment acquisitions for various departments, the projects are intended to enhance municipal services, public safety, recreational facilities, for your convenience, categorically, the approximate spend for car maintenance improvements, approximately 2.5 million, public property maintenance improvements, approximately 413,500 dollars, public safety equipment, approximately 361,000 dollars, public works equipment, approximately 407,000 dollars, sidewalk and street maintenance improvement, milling and paving, et cetera, approximately 1.7 million dollars, technology improvements, 230,000 vehicle replacement and large repairs, 1.1 million, and totaling to approximately 6.77 million, a capital improvements.
Thank you. Any of my council members have any questions or comments? So at this time, we are opening the floor for public hearing on these ordinance only, you have up to five minutes, one time up, if any member of the public wishes to address the council on these specific ordinance. See none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. We have ordinance 102405, it's an one ordinance provided for various improvements to the water system by the city of New York. Mr. Drew, if you'd like to address this one, Mr. Valenti?
I'll, I'll start, Mr. Wallace, of course, to assist, similar to the previous ordinance, this is the companion for the water budget, water utility budget for capital improvements, the ordinance outlines several projects related to improvements in water utility, several water main replacements and purchases of new fire hydrants, in total, again, categorically, for lead service line identification and removal, 350,000 dollars, metering billing, 200,000 dollars, technology improvement, 600,000 dollars, vehicle replacement and large repairs, 400,000 dollars, water main distribution improvement, 12 million and 42,000 dollars. Clearly, you can see that the facility has a very aggressive water main distribution program in this capital.
Thank you. Any of my fellow council members have any questions, any comments on these particular ordinance? See none? We are getting ready to open the floor for public hearing with these ordinance only, you have, if you would like to address the council, you have five minutes, one time up.
Hi, yes, due to where, uh, my main concern, I don't trust the water regardless, due to where, and what my main concern, I would say, wow, for people to be seeing their water changing colors, and wow, you get wait till 10 hours later.
Have you got this one ordinance, Ms. Daniel?
I'm, I'm speaking on, I'm meaning, due to where, no matter what, what you pay to try, you say the water is gonna be clean, how many years have you been saying, saying that? How many issues, what, led into water before, then like I said, just a few days ago, pink, where the water was pink, due to where then was, were we, luckily, the situation I complained about before, okay, no flooding fire hydrant during the dead day, so my point is, meaning, wow, after all that you're paying for, what is the water gonna be safe to really drink? Because like I said, as a New Brunswick resident, 47 years, and out of the past five years, I trust drinking the water? No, I do not.
Anybody else wishes to address the council on these particular ordinance? See none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. And then we have ordinance 102406, it's an ordinance provided for various improvements to the water system by the city of New York. Mr. Drew, Mr. Valenti?
I'll, I'll start, I'll, this is a companion to the sewer center sewer budget that was adopted in July as well, these projects are several projects, upgrades of pumps, controllers, replacement of sanitary sewer main line, acquisition of a new back truck, so office and equipment, 100,000 dollars, public facilities, 215,000 dollars, vehicle replacement, 450,000 dollars, with a total of 765,000 dollars.
Thank you. Any of my fellow council members have any questions, comments? At this time, we are preparing to open the public hearing on these ordinance only, you have your comments, so would like to come up, one person up, five minutes per person. See none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Now we have ordinances on first reading, ordinance 102407, it's an ordinance to amend a supplemental advice general ordinance of the city of New York, Title 10, bringing some traffic, this is in reference to parking zones, we have that person, we are adding 21 Main Street, 10 High Street, 254 Redman, 8 Prospect Street, and 219 Calhoun Street.
I move the ordinance, send down number 624 at 5:30 PM, same date to be advertised.
Aye, sir.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. We have ordinance 102408, an ordinance to amend a supplemental advice general ordinance of the city of New York, Title 10, vehicles on traffic, this is in reference to traffic control signals, we are dealing in various locations, and we are adding Albany Street, Nielsen, Holy Shabbat, New Hope, Houston Street, East Avenue, Albany Street, French, East Avenue, Hamilton, East Avenue, Silver Set, Anderson Street, Albany Street, New Avenue, Traffic Safety.
I move the ordinance, sending down number 6224 at 5:30 PM, same date to be advertised.
Aye, sir.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. We have ordinance 102409, it's an ordinance to amend a supplemental advice general ordinance of the city of New York, Title 10, public safety, we are adding a new chapter, a new, a new, a new, a new public.
I move the ordinance, send down number 6224 at 5:30 PM, same date to be advertised.
Aye, sir.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor Ludwig?
Madam Clerk, members of council, at this time, I, I'm not satisfied with some of the nuances, the way the ordinance is written, coupled with what I believe are more pressing quality, life issues, and implications of how this may be enforced, I don't know.
So we noted. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. We have ordinance 102410, it's an ordinance to adopt a redevelopment plan for the New York City, redevelopment plan area in the city of New York.
I move the ordinance, sending down number 6224 at 5:30 PM, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
We have resolutions 1239, um, before I ask my question, I want to ask my fellow council member, if they have any questions, any comments on any of the resolutions? So I'm gonna start with resolution number seven, Mr. Shannon, if you could just give us a overview of these particular resolutions, please.
Yes, Madam Council President, members of council, this resolution, what lies in the city, a little strip of property that's owned by the city of New York, that is in the block where the loan George II redevelopment plan is located, the designated redevelopment, the empty plaza owner Urban Renewal LLC, discovered that there's a 2,800 square foot strip of land on Morris and Nielsen Street, that was owned by, that is owned by the city, in connection with their development, and requested to purchase it. Because they're designated redevelopment, because this is a vacant, unimproved parcel, undersized parcel as well, pursuant to the statute, you can negotiate the sale of this particular section that runs along the street, no other property owners particular to it, and negotiated sale price is 275,000 dollars, and that is based upon the analysis of the land assessment, with the fact that it's an undersized lot.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Goldberg, if you could talk a little bit about number 18?
Sure. Correct, Council President, number 18 is the budget insertion, that for a grant that the city has received from its state via the federal government, the National Park Service, afraid to listen to the park.
So this is a, at the money, so we're gonna continue, we're moving forward with the project?
That's correct, that, this is the funds that the city received.
Thank you. Mr. Dominguez, if you could talk a little bit about 19 and 20, please?
Really, Council President, so 19 and 20 are budget insertions for grants that we received, that we applied for earlier this year from UEZ, number 19 is for public safety, for a police walking beat that will hopefully be able to roll out next year in the urban enterprise zone, and for number 20, it's for the second year of our business trading program, we're in the middle, or just wrapped up the first year, in terms of helping UEZ businesses obtain grants and loans and other ways for them to develop economically, so we've seen some success, but also that the, the business is a question, need a lot more handholding than we expected, and so we are going in for a second year, potentially more in the future, if, if we still continue to see growth from this project.
Thank you. And last thing, number 33, Mr. Dominguez?
I'm trying to, sure?
33.
33. Okay, um, so earlier this year, the, I believe it was this year, the New Jersey Economic Development Authority launched a program for certain urban districts in the city, in the state of New Jersey, I believe, we are one of six that were chosen by the EDA for this program, they have allocated about 5.7 million dollars for us to invest in, essentially, in our downtown, in a very localized, narrow district, for investment projects to encourage and bring back foot traffic post pandemic in, in our downtown board.
Thank you. Before I open the floor for the public, comments on the resolutions, do any of my fellow council members have any questions? Again, I asked a question, I'm asking for it, you go. At this time, we are preparing to open the meeting for the comment on the resolutions only, you have up to five minutes per person, one time up, any of our public wishes to speak on the resolutions, please, of course, the council.
Good evening, Charlie Cradwell, once again, Lou Frontzwick, Lou Frontzwick today, it's okay, I'll start from the back and work my way to the front, so let's go with resolution 31, the new renovation to redevelopment plan, can you tell me what prompted this item being placed on the agenda, is there a new developer that's interested, and so, what are they interested in?
Mr. Dominguez, why can't you tell us about?
Certainly, thank you, Council President, so, as, as you may recall, about 15 years or so ago, there was a new renovation redevelopment plan to build, a very ambitious project at, in this area, that fell through, and at the end of 2018 or beginning of 2019, the city repealed that redevelopment plan for future reconsideration, depending on what would happen, COVID happened, and that delayed this process tremendously, right now, there is interest in turning the, the empty lot component of that area, where the prosecutor's office and other things were at some point, into office space, and so, there will be, at the next planning board meeting, a presentation by myself on the redevelopment plan for consideration of this potential project.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move to 18, the National Park Service grant, any idea when the park would actually open?
So, go on, will you, the front?
I'm surprised I have to depart to Mr. Dominguez.
Mr. Valenti, yes, possessed the?
In accordance, of course, when we're, have engaged archaeological historians to observe the excavations in the park, National Park Service requested that we submit that obligation plan to them, and then we can actually start the project, you may have noticed, some precast concrete had been dropped off there, so we're hopefully imminent with the next couple of weeks, as soon as we get finished with the parks, we're going to start.
Thank you.
That's where they can start, if they start on time, when will the park be done and open?
We have it.
The, the contractors for 365 days were very optimistic, it would be something far less than that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Guess I'll move to number seven, this is the sale of, of the land, can I get some clarity on the lot and lot number?
Mr. Shannon?
Uh, I believe the reservation is 120, it's a portion of what's known as Lot 120, Lot 5001, which is the smaller sections of that particular, um, mother lot, if you will.
Okay, I'm a little confused, because 5.01 looks like it's already owned by the church, not the city.
It is, this is, these are smaller sections, apparently, they've been combined in connection with the redevelopment, but these particular, this particular land is so small, and I've just had meets and bounds descriptions that came up in the title board, so I think, quite frankly, the city didn't even know we owned it, until the developer, or the floor of tension, connection with their title search.
Okay, well, I did print out the tax map from the city, it's okay, I'll have copies, my clerk is shooting.
I'm well aware the tax map is a private.
Yeah, well, I'd like the council to be able to see it, and, yeah, I guess I'm kind of confused about which piece of land it is, is it possible it's 1902?
I'm not willing to quote the exact lot, what I have is, it's within that particular parcel, any lot, um, 5.01, Lot 120, and the deed of conveyance was specifically set forth in meets and bounds description, which runs up to about 2,800 square feet.
Right, right, and I guess, you mentioned something about the Nelson Street?
Mr. Dominguez?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I, Mr. Cradwell shared this, this map with me just now, I, I think this, this tax map is potentially slightly outdated, I remember from when the redevelopment plan was adopted for this area, that, this, I believe, were all grow homes, or something similar, that burned down at some point in the past, these were all consolidated into one very large lot by a church at some point, I think, it's hard to tell, I think this is last updated in 2013, so I think, I don't remember what the main lot is, but I think 5.01 is, in fact, all of these small lots were consolidated into that lot at some point.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez.
Okay, so here, the, the information on the city website is outdated, can I ask, how did you arrive at 275,000 dollars?
Mr. Shannon?
Sure, the assessed land value, we calculated down to be 125 dollars a square foot, were based upon a building lot in the C4 commercial zone, based upon vacant land, in light of the fact, this is only 2,800 square foot, undersized vacant land, strip of land, we negotiated a discount of 25 percent, and then we actually added a little more for administrative costs and expenses, and that's how we came up with the 275.
Thank you, next, thank you, Mr. Cradwell.
Hi there, everyone, I'm Council President, I wanted to ask for a board detail on number 33, the option to the power, type of consideration, the EDA, and, uh, is this, is this better? I don't really have a lot of that, I need your, 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 because I, I have to protect a little bit more, it's a match. Okay, I'll talk a little bit louder, I wanted to ask about number 33, the potential funding from the, the EDA for investment in downtown, I was just wondering if you could get some more insight on what types of things specifically the city might be seeking to use that funding for?
Mr. Dominguez, we have the information at this time?
Um, we're working through it, we're looking right now in terms of more aesthetic arts types projects, we were exploring with the EDA possibilities on, depending on what angle the, the city wanted to do with George Street on a long-term basis, but that was not in line with what the EDA wanted these dollars spent on, so they've directed us to try to target more aesthetic, experiential approaches that would draw people into the city, if, if anybody wants to, if they go to the city website, and my, potentially, social media, we're actually having a, a virtual public information hearing session, meeting, whatever you want to call it, regarding possible options for that tomorrow night, or tomorrow afternoon, depending on how you feel the time is anymore, and we can find out more information about that in greater specificity then.
Mr. Dominguez, you want to say something?
It's on the, Council President, this funding came through the EDA, through some of federal ARBA money, and there are restrictions that come from the federal government down through this grant, and Mr. Dominguez, as you said, is hosting a public hearing tomorrow, and, and we're interested to question.
Thank you, yes, can we just hit the time, the start time, what time, Mr. Dominguez?
I, I have to double check, I'll, I'll check and then announce if possible before the meeting's over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other resolutions?
Ah, yes. So the 33, you have to do anything due to outdoor dining to bring more people in downtown?
Just, Mr. Dominguez just explained that this is a grant, and they're still looking at what the money will be used for, because there's some restrictions. So we don't, right now, we don't have any specifics. But tomorrow, there's a meeting that is going to give us.
Okay. All right, thank you. My point is due to, I mentioned to you all before, which I think God is trying to tell you something. Wow, since the outdoor dining has closed down, it's been a month and a half due to where, wow, look how good the weather's been, no rain. I meant two days of showers out of what, how many days? Fifty, sixty days almost? What, every time you had it open? How many storms are we getting back to back? You can't tell me the Lord. And I wasn't trying to tell you something. So like I said, what you're doing to try to bring the community, more people down there, you're doing the wrong thing.
And you can have that resolution, 270, please?
The next one, due to where, I have to see which number it is that's on a grant. Here, 19. Public safety, due to where, what, like I said, as a resident here 47 years, New Brunswick was never this much crime. I hear that you're going to have officers walking around throughout the neighborhood, but believe me, I think it's time to do more, due to where, what, you had eight shootings late last month. It's public, it says public safety, due to where, dealing with walk, walking around.
Only the D.C. area only. This is a downtown area, not the whole city.
I don't, I don't care what area it is, honestly, like I said before.
Stick to the resolutions.
I, it is sticking to the rednecks. The only place that everybody say is safe in New Brunswick where that's Rockwood Village, due to where, what, what, same thing we said on Facebook before, due to where, what, at 47 years, what, weren't the people complaining about downtown when you didn't have the outdoor dining? Why? Because you had too many homeless, too many people smoking marijuana, and that's the main reason, another main reason why the outdoor dining did not work, due to where, yes, you need to start patrolling all areas. What, how many break-ins in Rockwood? So it's not even about, what, just about downtown or wherever. The police, like I said, you need to start going after real damn criminals. At 47 years living here, New Brunswick was never like this, due to where I hear people saying, wow, it's not even safe to go downtown anymore. Like I said, what your council members are doing, Mayor Jim Cahill, the planning board, and all the other ones, you're destroying New Brunswick, because like I said, beauty is not making New Brunswick safe or better again. Thank you.
Anybody else have any resolutions? Mr. Dominguez?
Yes, I'm sorry. It is at 6:00 PM tomorrow, and on the city's website on the calendar, if you click the 17th, it has the link to the meeting. It's at 6:00 PM.
At this time, any further? Any other public issues or other council resolutions? Seeing none?
Any resolutions? Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes, except for number 20, where I abstained.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gassman?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludward?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. At this time, I'm just going to give a few updates to, there was an incident with the water supply in the city on October 2nd. I just want to be sure there was some questions. I know that Mr. Cradwell asked some questions regarding that incident, and you see the answer to those questions on Friday. But I just want to make sure that people know that the acknowledgement that this incident happened was rectified, and there is no harm or any threat for the problem, regarding this incident. In terms of the shootings, I don't know if anything has happened. Right after our meeting, there was an arrest made for one, for one of the shootings, the one that happened on Jones Avenue, there was somebody who was arrested. There are some incidents that happened, press releases have been put out in the city. Those are current investigations. They're active. And as I said, at the last meeting, the EDC council and the administration, the police department, of most priority, the safety of all the residents. So that's all we have for those updates. I did, at the last meeting, I committed to us, my fellow members, there was a suggestion of having the chief of police presence in these council meetings, I confirmed with my fellow council members, and at this time, on consensus, we don't think that is needed. We are satisfied with the process that we have right now and the representation that we have for the police department, having Captain Hoover. In the future, if there's a need, in a emergency need, or there's a need for you to be here, we will make that decision, asking to be here, but at this time, there's no need. We are satisfied with what we have at this point. I just wanted to remind people that there's a field day, the Masca, we have a Masca in the city. They're going to have on October 24th here at City Hall at 9:00, and you're going to present the Masca, so the public is invited. Also, the city is doing a harvest festival on October 26th, the youth sports complex in Houston Rabbit, you'll attend at 10:00 AM. So the community is hoping to come. And then lastly, I want to skip the floor to my fellow councilman, La Fleming, to say a few words.
In May of 2020, a political act of retribution was launched against me in the form of litigation, which a vicious law was told in order to slander my character. At the time, it was determined that the litigation against me was within the scope of my position as a councilman, so that made me eligible to be defended by the joint insurance fund. I was given a counsel not of my choosing, but as the case proceeded, my counsel informed me that he would explore all options that would be presented to me. It was then, at that point during the litigation process, that the scope of the case changed, and it was determined that I was now being litigated against as a private citizen and not as a councilperson. So it was determined that my legal fees would no longer be covered by the joint insurance fund. It was also during this time that communication between myself and my soon-to-be former council began to break down through several factors. It was also during that time that I was presented with a monetary figure to settle the case at the court, which was within my legal options. After considering all options, I decided to go to trial. I had never signed onto any settlement at any time. Recently, a judgment was entered against me on a motion made by the plaintiff's counsel due to a technicality. And I just wanted to say that this case is not over, and it will be adjudicated in due time, place to be determined. So accordingly, I'll no longer be commenting on this. But for the record, I would like to say I've been safe serving this community since I first worked, my first election over 46 years ago. I've been working in a female-dominated field for the past 35 years. I've also run a mentor group, which over 6,000 students have been, have been graduated from, but over 3,000 students, half of them are females. And I've never been accused of anything, but because I've had the temerity to want to serve my community, because others are not able to prevail against us electorally, there are one thing that those that feel that they can use the one racist tool that have been used against black men for decades, that we are unable to control our sexual urges, and that we have to resort to sexual crimes. In the past, they were able to lynch us from the nearest tree without even a hint of a trial. And even though times have changed, the methods have done, except now it comes in the form of an unequal justice system. In conclusion, I want to say emphatically that I've never, under any circumstances, committed any inappropriate act against anyone at any time, and in due time, all this will be revealed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. And just for the record, this council will not make any comments, any further comments or any regarding the matter, councilwoman. So is anybody else, councilmembers, wanting to make any comment on anything, any updates?
Just want to remind folks, November 5th, get out of the vote. So that's an important date for our next council meeting.
I actually want to take it as well. Two important deadlines. The first is October 30th. If you know a senior citizen aged 65 or older, please encourage them to apply for senior degrees. It is a program that locks in your taxes, where the state will essentially pay the difference in taxes paid from the moment you apply. New Brunswick has a little bit of a low participation rate, so we really want to ensure that more homeowners are applying. Also, anchor property tax rebate, we also have a low participation rate. This is a state program, and for the first time ever, renters are eligible. You may not know this, but renters do pay for a portion of property taxes through their rent. And so if you have not applied already, the deadline is in November. The application is literally your name and where you lived. It's really short, and I promise it will take less than two minutes. And the amount back to you is from 450, if you're a renter, up to 1750 if you are a senior citizen who owns their house. So please apply, and then encourage other people to apply as well. Payments have already started going out. I know I got mine already, so please encourage others to apply.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. At this time, we are preparing for the meeting for public comment. We have up to five minutes per person, one time off. It's time to wear the hat of me. This is not an answer and questions and answer fee, or these comments. So I ask you to respectfully address the council, as you know, the council respectfully addresses you. So this time, if any other member of the public wishes to address, do a public comment. Please approach the microphone.
Yes, Danielle Moore. First, I would like to start off where, as councilmember Suzanne Sephora Ludward used to say, for the record, due to where, essentially, you were the one that's checked and made sure in 2022 was saying my phone was not on a tracker. Please, for the record, why don't you ask the police department, due to where, for out of the past year and a half, these three white cars that's been following me, like I said, oh, I've been having a cam, cam camera, let's just start starting, but I don't have to have no professional camera, so please look into that, because like I said, I'm not no damn criminal. And if I was a criminal, why didn't New Brunswick still turn over the cam cameras, body cameras? Well, it's been almost eight, nine months now, you still haven't turned them over? Because what? I didn't do what you accuse me to? I would like to say to Mr. Valente, I talked to him at the traffic meeting, thank you for quick some part of the situation on fire and rubble. I would like to say thank you to councilmember Ferguson. I had talked to him on the domestic violence, due to where, about that street as well. So thank you for taking matters seriously and safety. I wish, I hope we can go back to what, that's where I'm all about, saving lives. I'm not no damn criminal. And I would like to say, due to where he took the time to me, where he explained to me, due to where the harm reduction program, that's where first I learned the Narcan, what you're using over there at United Methodist Church, then okay, the next one, due to where harm reduction on Eastern Avenue. It's sad to say, wow, I'm saving someone damn life. Wow. Like I said, due to where, what, October 4th, I had used four Narcan on a gentleman, due to where I talked about, due to where, wow, and then due to where, what, first thing I'm going to act with Jeff Monticello, where still worrying about the damn man, you're going to ask me, where did I get this needle and Narcan? Please, then October 7th, a double header, I put up there, thank you to the EMS fire department, and then also as well, due to where, the police department, due to where, wow, you can't tell me the Lord did not call me out with on his body camera, car 987. I just, somebody picked me up instantly, I went over there with the bag in my hand, not knowing I would really have to inject someone with a needle, which I do have the license for, due to where a Narcan, if someone is not breathing, not responding, this is the faster way. Wow, please, why the hell was the police department, and most of you really trying to make me out of a criminal? Why, because you hate to see a black person do something damn good? 47 years here, here. Like I said, all I do is what, I help people because I'm helping myself, due to where, what, just like I helped Mr. Dean, I standing in there, all the doctors, almost five hours to help him. He's going through major depression. I do what I can, due to where, what he's diagnosed with, due to where, yes, I'm telling him, I can't keep up, I'm increasing with the pain now, I gotta talk to surgery, due to where, what, New Brunswick Police Department tearing my damn shoulders, relocation, dislocated nerve damage, what, getting worse, but I'm on five damn prescriptions. What, what, you still ain't turned over the cameras yet to the lawyer? Wow. Because like I said, I didn't do nothing damn wrong, go after real damn criminals. But like I said, do I ask Mr. Dean for money? His friend to tell you what? I have plenty of damn money. I told you the Lord blessed me, I even showed you my P S and T, due to where, what I asked for? Do I get blessed by the Lord? What, am I helping him, due to where the social worker said, oh, don't give him this medicine? I do it twice a day? Am I charging him? No, because it's not about money. I teach people, you help someone else, you're helping yourself at times. But please, I'm getting tired of New Brunswick damn police department thinking I'm a damn criminal, due to where, what, just because I'm black? Like I said, I will show you my license right here, due to where, please, like I said, what, yes, due to where, I couldn't do the CPR, lady came over, did CPR, okay, hey, due to where she helped with the, have a damn double header one side. Oh, I was just talking, I was on standby, certain ones I know that you just trained, due to where Narcan does not bring you back. What, and one night, due to where the police, detective's looking at me, oh, what am I doing? Sometimes I just play music, but they're able to sing a song, and I play for them, and that is okay. They're not really deeply into, going into OD. So like I said, I take my time, everybody is different, but believe me, I study different ways to help people. Like I said, you can't tell me that the Lord did not touch me to save lives, and like I said, it felt damn good for EMS to really tell me. Wow, I thank you so much, so many lives that you do save, due to where, what, it's not to look good. I told you, I don't even want to be a lawyer or a retentive, but the Lord touched me to save lives, like I said, until a devil leader that's not up there in there is sued at the corner of my way? Please, and he started all this evil? Please, grow up, stop being a devil.
Anybody else have any wishes to add, Mr. Council?
I'm talking about Pittman. Real quick, off of what she said about the opioid crisis. I was here, I probably said like a year, almost to death, and I found this in a car while I was going, it was crazy. There was a funding for opioid, opioid funds for $3,42,726, I mean, 342,000, $742.48. I guess you guys received a grant, that was last year. And what was my problem to me about that grant was, when you guys approved the grant, the person you approved it to, they said that they didn't know initially what they were going to do with the money. So a year later, do you guys know when you're actually done with the money?
Okay, okay, enough there. At the last meeting, we started to prove this, you will have to establish a real request.
So the money has come in as a result of the settlement, and it's coming in in pieces or making, uh, 59 concessions, as it appears. They'll be contemplating in the 2025 budget process how the money will be used now that we have more set a handle on the income.
So we're just waiting for the money to be delivered by the council, assuming that we have it.
You're waiting for what?
We are expecting the money, the money, we don't have it at hand. So once, some of it we have, and then we have to continue to receive, and then we plan accordingly.
But the total sum will be $342,726, right?
When you have to have that money at hand?
Yeah, yeah. But to get, you have a specific amount, you don't even know what you're doing with it yet, so why is it 342,000? You have a specific number. I've said we got a roundabout number, like 400 grand, 500, you got a specific number, 48 cents, a specific number. What are you going to do with it? It has to be specific, because you have a specific number, but you don't know specifically what you're doing with the money. What, what is this 48 cents?
It can have part of the grant, by formula, as to how much money we get.
That's the amount of the award. Also, I want to bring, I came here, I don't appreciate what Councilman Fleming said, because you didn't add me to the accolades of the things that you do, and I feel like offended, like, you know. But my question too is also like, what do, I mean, because he's not being represented, the city's not preparing for his council, right? He's representing himself, right?
Not to the best of my knowledge. But why, Mr.?
What is the technicality? Why is he representing himself?
I am not, I have liberty to discuss that. That's Mr. Fleming's personal matter, so I'm not going to ask, these councils are going to talk about that. But why have you come?
Does he have to run three children over on Eastern Avenue? Well, all right. Nonetheless, you know, November 5th is an important date for everybody, and one of the most important things about this election, people maybe not realize, is that this is one of the only elections. one of the only elections that still might be determined by black men. Black men is a determining factor in this election. Republicans are fighting for black men's vote, Democrats are fighting for black men's vote. And what black men are doing is, they're hoping their vote, vote back because we haven't been compensated. The fight today, our question is, most black men are, when are we gonna receive reparations? Reparations is con- con- uh, compensation for transatlantic slave trade that we haven't been compensated for. So, we're fighting for that, that's what we're, what we're going to hold for. And reparation doesn't have to be a federal initiative. It can be a local initiative. New Brunswick can participate in reparations, the foundation of black freedom. They can. Uh, Ms. Gaskin said that you would, you said that you would participate in assisting a reparations initiative in Montana State last time I was here, right?
I do support reparations, I say it my way.
You said you would support our initiative. Uh, would you support a local initiative?
Happy to discuss more of the specifics. I didn't think that one, girl.
Reparations is not, it's, it's, it's not a discussion. You know, uh, it's, we're owed about fourteen trillion dollars, that's just one form of reparations. We need to be, we need to receive reparations for transatlantic slave trade, we need to receive reparations for JPO error, we need to receive reparations for mass incarceration, we need to receive reparations for germ warfare, we need to receive reparations for preferential lending practices, we need to receive reparations for taxation without representation, and these are all trades, so the first shift is fourteen trillion dollars, but it doesn't have to be a federal initiative.
Mr. Fleming, I, I don't want to interrupt your time, so, but I'll leave you my minutes for you to finish your statement.
Yes, it doesn't have to be a federal initiative. Like she says, she's been a New Brunswick resident for forty-seven years, I've been December, it'd be forty-nine years. And I've seen the hall of course that we've been through in my lifetime, so I can imagine my grandparents, great grandparents, we have streets named after slave masters. And for some reason, this reparation thing is a joke, but it's on the main stage now. And I think that I would like to work with anyone in the council to create a local initiative to get foundational free black men, not African-Americans, not colored people, not minorities. We are foundational free black Americans. And we deserve reparations. Because the Irish, they were served reparations as indentured servants, you have the GI Bill for Caucasians, you have the Jews, like, you receive reparations in America, you have the Japanese receive reparations in America.
Time yourself.
The only people who haven't received reparations for building this nation was foundational black American freedom.
Time yourself, Mr. Fleming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, once again, Charlie Prideville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. It was a pleasure to see some of you at the unveiling of our new Paul Robeson statue. I think Paul Robeson was an inspirational figure that we can all, uh, look to and look up to and, uh, strive to follow the example that he set, and I want to draw your attention to the inscription on the back of that, uh, wonderful sculpture. Uh, it says, quote, "The answer to injustice is not to silence the critic, but to end injustice." And I think that is a quote that everyone on this council should take to heart. And, uh, I'll begin my, uh, questions and remarks by starting with, uh, rest in peace, Oscar Sanchez, uh, a young man whose life was taken far too soon, he was the victim of a homicide over the weekend, and, uh, you know, as far as I can tell, it's unsolved. Uh, and, uh, the information only came to the public two days after, uh, he was found dead. So, I think that, you know, that's a, another example of delay in notification, delay in public information, and knowledge is power, people deserve the information, I think it should have come out sooner. Um, you've already addressed some of the questions I had about the water utility, uh, but, uh, I do need to ask about the Ethics Board. The Ethics Board, um, has failed to take up my complaint against Suzanne Secora Ludwig. Uh, what is the status of the Ethics Board? Is it able to do its function, or is it dysfunctional?
We'll find out when you have, as to the rest of my knowledge, it's still functioning.
Well, I believe at the last meeting, Mr. Shammy said that they did not have an attorney. Can we get an update since Mr. Shammy's here on that?
Do we have that information, Mr. Shammy? I'm still.
Okay. I believe that board also failed to properly document its own decisions in my prior cases against Mr. Glenn Fleming, and that brings us to the matter of it's before the Superior Court of New Jersey now. And I want to be clear, I do have copies of the order filed September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four by Judge Patrick Bradshaw, and it says, "Defendant Glenn J. Fleming, Senior, be and hereby is adjudicated in default of the settlement agreement entered into on March sixth, two thousand twenty-three in the above entitled matter. Judgment be and hereby is entered, that's defending Glenn J. Fleming, Senior, and in favor of plaintiff in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars." So, uh, this is an order from the court ordering Mr. Fleming to pay his accuser fifteen thousand dollars, and, uh, while I'm glad he addressed it tonight, I think the, the way he addressed it was irresponsible and wholly insufficient. May I ask, who made the determination that this complaint fell under his role as a councilman?
We're not gonna have, as I said before, we're not gonna make any more comments in the case of this, uh, councilman Fleming.
Okay, well, I'm very disappointed because I'm sure you read my email, I sent you an email about this, I'm sure you received it, anybody who checked or emailed on the council, I sent you each an email about this, and I included the bills. So, the Middlesex County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund spent forty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy cents representing Glenn Fleming in this sexual harassment lawsuit that we came to find out had nothing to do with his role on this council. Why was any public money spent on Mr. Fleming's defense? Who made that determination to forward this matter to the JIF? That's a fair question, it's our money. Why was any of it spent on this case?
Anybody else?
I'd like an answer to my question.
You know, I'm not gonna make any comment at this time.
Why not? Why don't you think we deserve an answer as to why this city authorized legal defense for Mr. Fleming's personal sexual harassment case? I think this was an injustice, and I think that somebody needs to get to the bottom of it. And if we can't do it internally here in the city of New Brunswick, we'll have to get higher ups to look into this, because this is really inappropriate, I mean, talk about unethical, uh, to use your position to get a free lawyer and then complain about the lawyer when you, uh, have an order against you and say that you're not, you know, you're gonna have your day in court. Mr. Fleming, this isn't good enough, this has been four years.
That's the time, that's the time, you time yourself, you time yourself, Mr. Fleming.
Okay, we deserve so much better, and I do have copies for anyone here documenting the meeting, if you want copies of these documents, please.
Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council?
Hey, good evening, Chris Ryan, R.D., New Brunswick. Um, and let's just start off by saying, I'm really proud of our public, uh, employees here, particularly within the police, fire, sanitation, public works, and all, uh, men and women who really make this city as safe and as clean and as functional as they can, including all their administrative staff that were largely unthanked, uh, in offices and desks all over the city to allow them to do their job. So, I just want to pass that along, and I appreciate that. Um, prior to, uh, voting on the resolutions, we didn't have like any advance notice, so this is a question, you may not answer it, but Mr. Castaneda abstained from voting on number twenty-one, that resolution for the twenty twenty-four U E Z admin budget, and I was just wondering if you could explain why you abstained from that particular resolution?
Mr. Castaneda, would you answer that? Not a problem. Uh, so, the organization I work for, New Brunswick Tomorrow, has been working the U E Z particularly on that, and I thought there would have been a conflict of interest to vote on that particular, uh, topic.
That's very fair, and so, the council allows you to serve as a council member when you have intermittent conflicts, all you have to do is just, so, so I understand, so you just have to abstain or not vote on those matters that, I excuse myself, or refuse yourself. Rise to a potential level that might appear to be improper, even though may not be if you voted, but you just don't vote on those matters, and that's okay with the council. And for the city attorney to allow you to do that.
That is correct.
That's my understanding. Okay, great, I just wanted to be clear that you can serve as a council member even when you have intermittent and, uh, maybe some potential conflicts with city business, you just refuse yourself in those votes.
Correct, you refuse yourself in the top of the issue.
That's what I thought. All right, um, so basically, uh, I just have another comment. I never thought I'd follow up on a Charlie Prideville comment, because I really do think he operates in large part out of, uh, malice and, uh, being vindictive and making a tax person. But he mentioned something that flies in the face of Glenn Fleming's statement tonight, and that was that there was a settlement on his case in March of two thousand twenty-three, yet Glenn Fleming said that there was a recent settlement. And so, from March of two thousand twenty-three till now, it was almost eighteen months, and I sat here almost all last year, listening to some of this nonsense, um, and, and Mr. Fleming remaining silent, which was his right, and so be it, but to lie today that there was a recent settlement, when what really apparently happened, according to Charlie, is that there was an order, uh, more than a year and a half ago, that for whatever reason, he refused to pay or advise anybody about, and then recently, there was another order that sort of compelled him to pay, yet he stands on the soapbox today trying to let us know he's a victor. What he really is is a charlatan, largely a mute, that has not spoken once in the last two years on anything of substance, and then comes out to rant today that he was, uh, somehow mistreated. I would suggest that the council hold him some, in some way accountable for that, uh, deception that he put out on you guys, just based on what I heard tonight, that he removed himself from the ballot in three weeks and allowed the council to find somebody that actually produces or contributes something to the city in a way that's meaningful. Because he can obviously speak, I think he's a teacher, and he did good speaking tonight, but I agree with absolutely nothing about how the way he presented it. So, that's my comment on Glenn Fleming, and I hope that the council comes up with a ordinance or a resolution or an action to somehow hold him accountable for his deception. Thank you.
Hi there, I'm here with House, I'm with these damn streets. Um, one of the, the resolutions that was on the agenda today was regarding repairs to the Henry Guest House of the library, and that just prompted me to ask if there's any update on some of the interior damages to the main library building, whether we're concerned about possible lead paint or asbestos, uh, the mask that I, I'm familiar with on the test, that is that they were, uh, seeking to, to get someone to test that and to make repairs, so I'm wondering if there's an update there.
Don't tell me if it can happen in the octane, I would love a review.
Yes, ma'am. Um, okay, the, the architect that we hired didn't have it tested, I have not gotten the paper document, but I've been told by, by the architect, there is no asbestos in that thing, or plaster behind it. Uh, there is lead, as is in any building built before nineteen seventy. Uh, I'm waiting for the, um, documents from them. Um, I, I had a conversation with the architect approximately a week ago, and she said, you know, the documents are coming, um, and had said that, uh, we would set up a meeting this week, which I don't think is going to happen, or next week.
All right, thank you for that update. Um, something else that, uh, that has been discussed a number of times at these meetings in the past, that I, we haven't heard anything, any update on recently, is the, um, project for the future of George Street, any potential large changes that might be coming to downtown George Street. Is there any update or any timeline for when an update might be shared?
More to the best of my knowledge, if you can, so.
At this time, there is none.
Is, is that still an, an active conversation, a project being, being worked on, or is that stalled or?
I, I can say that it's, I don't want to use the word active in a wrong way, it's not something that's been pushed aside, so it's something that the conversation is going to pursue, but right now, it's not an active, active conversation. That makes sense.
Got it. But this is still a, yeah, matter that is going to maybe tighten up and hopefully either acted upon or some determination.
It's still certainly a realtor discussion.
Okay, appreciate that. Um, and I also just, uh, wanna thank, uh, Councilman Gaskins for the reminders on senior degrees and anchor power, I think that's a good public service announcement and useful information, so I'm glad you shared it.
Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council? See you none?
Motion to adjourn.
Senator. Councilmember Gaslinian?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig? Yes. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haskins?
Yes.